This is the third Tuesday in the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
Okay, welcome everybody to our regular scheduled City Council meeting. It seems like a month since we've met last. So, we'll begin this with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo. Me too Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson. Eight present, we have a quorum.
Next up is the consent agenda. Sandy, you have a couple additions to that consent agenda?
Yes, under number five, Consent Agenda Letter A, Monthly Reports Number One. Finance Director Treasurers Report was uploaded to the city website. Under number five, Consent Agenda Letter C, the CVB budget was also uploaded to the city website. And under number five, Consent Agenda Letter D, the list of bills was uploaded to the city website. That's all.
Alright, thanks Sandy. And you understand how consent agenda works? These are, all these items that are under the consent agenda, we make one motion and we vote on that, that one motion unless council members would like to see any of those items moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. And you can choose to do that and then we would take those individually instead of as a whole. Anybody would like to do that?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve the consent agenda with those additions that Sandy had spelled out for us. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under the regular agenda, I guess we did have just one handout and that came from Gusmer Enterprises and we'll be discussing that later on the agenda. You should have that on your desk. Otherwise, the regular agenda is as is, so I would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve the regular agenda.
Motion by Chestnut, second by, I'm sorry, Peterson. To approve the regular agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, under non-agenda items and announcements, we have introduction of Resolution Number 1434 for Shamble Road Vacation. And then this is, the main reason it's on here is just to make sure that we set a public hearing for September 3rd of 2019. And Justin, are you ready to just explain what's going on here? And then I know that Chris is here, Mr. Gusmer's here, and I forgot your name again. Tom is here too, and I think they want to say a few things too.
Sure, absolutely. So their resolution is shown on page 85 of your packet, continues on to 86. There's an Exhibit A for the legal description of the section of Shamble Road that we will be vacating. Exhibit B is a sketch or drawing of that legal description. And the handout that was passed around, I believe you all have the aerial view of the Gusmer Expansion. Is that the one you turned, handed out there, Tom? Showing basically the project, the reason why we're doing this. Gusmer Enterprises is planning to expand their operation, their facility, to the east. In order to do that, they, I guess we're partnering, working with them to vacate a portion of Shamble Road. Gusmer Enterprises owns the land to the east of Shamble, the old Orp property. So basically, it would become one larger, or one large parcel together. And we would reroute Shamble Road around basically the Gusmer property. So, a land swap, it's almost a one-for-one land swap. So the road would go around it to the east and back to the south to Ware Street, rerouting our Water Main and the gravel road. So, and that is all just to accommodate this new expansion for the industry. So we need to get this resolution passed tonight on council, as the mayor has mentioned, so that we can get a public hearing scheduled for September 3rd, which would then meet basically the construction schedule for the build of the building and also of realigning our road in Water Main. So, I think, I think I covered it.
Okay. Chris or Tom, anything you would like to add to what, Justin?
Are there any questions on the building or the why?
Does anybody want to hear about their project? Absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks Chris.
Hello, Chris Gusmer. Yeah, we've been fortunate to continue the growth that we've been undergoing as a business. We're looking to expand about 35,000 square feet. The net result, continued job creation, we'd add somewhere between 20 and 30 additional jobs to the community within the building. It's warehouse space, it's employee facilities, break room, things like that to support our existing future growth. And then additional production space, so we can fit in some new work cells. So, it's a quick summary of the project. We appreciate your assistance in helping with this growth.
And this is your third project in the last, what, seven or eight years now?
It would be the third major project since 2006, yeah.
Okay, so 13 years, okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Anybody have any questions?
Who's paying for the rerouting of the road and Water Main? Is that money part of the project?
That's part of the project. The city has signed a pre-development agreement with Gusmer Enterprises and they will be covering that cost through an assessment process. Maybe Kathy can provide a few more details, but the short story is they will be.
Anybody else have any other questions of Justin or Chris? Alright, I need to just make sure, I might have said this incorrectly, but we are not approving Resolution 1434. We are just making a motion to set a public hearing for this resolution for September 3rd, 2019 at 6:00 PM. So, I'd be looking for a motion.
I would move that the council set a public hearing for September 3rd regarding the Resolution 1434.
And I'll second.
Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we set a public hearing for September 3rd, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against?
Abstain.
Motion carries, seven ayes, one abstention, two absent. Okay, next we have, this is still under announcements, we have a thank you letter from the Wapaka Community Arts Board, that's just informational, it's actually on page 89 of your packet. So... Mary, have they finished all of their sidewalks now, or their crosswalks?
We have two remaining. One will be done, and they'll both be done during the week of Arts on the Square. They are the, the crosswalk from Book World, which isn't there anymore, to Articize and Totes Building. So crossing Sessions Street at Main, and the other one crosses Main Street at Sessions. So, again, from like where Embellishments was, or Northern Home is now, to Fletcher's. So, yep, two more to go and they're wonderful. And thank you again to the street department and Justin and Roger and all of you.
We've been getting, as we talked today at the Department Mayor's meeting today, we've gotten outside discussion from other communities. I mean, I personally talked to the mayor of Green Bay yesterday about it and, you know, and someone said today, a lot of communities have talked about it, but nobody has actually done it. And we're probably one of the first that has actually done it around here. So that's pretty cool.
Yay.
Yeah. Alright, next up, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If anybody would like to step up to the podium, give your name and address and speak to us on a non-agenda item, it's all yours. Please limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Alright, let's move on then to Department head reports. And we have, we'll start with Kathy as always. Remember Kathy's wearing a couple hats for the next couple months here, so Kathy.
Thank you Mayor Smith, good evening council members. I'm pretty much gonna just report about the finance department. But, we're working currently with the police department in doing the setup for advanced scheduling. This is a timekeeping software that we purchased when we updated our payroll software and our financial software. And it's going to help them with their scheduling. They have a very unique schedule and they sometimes don't fit in the same boxes we do as Monday through Friday employees. So, we're putting that in place for the police department to make their payroll processing much smoother and easier. We have been informed by the Department of Transportation that they are going to get, amending our 2018 taxi grant by giving us an additional $12,000 to be able to purchase our, one of our buses or, instead of using two years of our grant funding for equipment, for replacement. So we will be able to continue with buying another minivan also this year. So, that was very nice surprise for the transit service because both of those pieces of equipment have over 200,000 miles on them and need to be replaced. The employee annual public, physical assessment, I put public, I automatically must have corrected it, but personal health assessment for each of the full-time employees is coming up on August 1st. Already, the rec center clinic is full and so we should see good participation again this year. We also have been informed a little early on our health insurance renewal that we are tracking very well as far as experience and should see some favorable rates if nothing happens in the meantime for that. So, I'm, I'm doing really well on protecting a lower health insurance premium than normal. Otherwise, I don't have anything else. Keeping up for day-to-day and lots of meetings and fires putting out, so that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions, Kathy? Any questions concerning economic development from any of the council members at this time that you can think of? This would be a good time to ask that too.
I got one. Is there any update on the situation with the old Catholic church and that?
Yes. We, I have asked Andrew Dane to contact Nino Perdelli, who is the current owner of the property. He is still scheduled to bring us a proposal by fall. So, I've tasked Andrew with certain economic development things and felt that it was much better spent of my consultant money to, instead of him coming to these meetings, is to have him more hours in the office to bird dog those type of economic development. So he's been handling a lot of the economic development and zoning issues besides coming to the development review team, so.
Alright, Kathy, thank you. Let's go to the library.
Well, our summer library program is in full swing. We have almost 1,000 people signed up for the summer library program. 340 adults, 454 kids, and those are listeners and readers, and 174 teens. And if you happened to be in the area last Thursday, we had a Star Wars Day and the storm troopers were here. And there were lots of pictures that were taken. If you look at our Facebook page, you'll see some of those. So, really what we're focusing on is being the out-of-school place for learning for adults as well as children and teens. We're seeing a lot of activity this year. Our programs are being well-attended. We're really pleased with the turnout for, from the community. About a third of the people who are using our summer library program are using it online. So there's an online component that makes it easier for those people who are really attached to their phones or their devices. We are coming to the close of our strategic plan data gathering point and we're going to be pulling together that information and coming up with a plan hopefully by November that we'll be able to present that to the council. And we'll have a day-long meeting in August with our committee to formulate that plan. We have a new program at the library called Lucky Day. And with donated funds, we're able to buy some extra copies of popular books or videos. And they check out for a much shorter period of time, but they can't be put on hold. And you only get it if you happen to be the lucky person that sees it when you come into the library. So come in and look at our Lucky Day wall. There should be a few things on there by tomorrow. They're, the videos are due in three days. So, there's a little bit more of a turnaround and we're doing that with help from the friends of the library. Our outreach and engagement is really blossoming this summer. We're doing a lot of outreach to Sunny Day Daycare Center. And these are kids who wouldn't get to the library during the day because their parents are working. So we have baby garden storytime and then STEM programming for school-aged children at the Learning Center after, they have a program there for their kids after summer school. So there's a lot going on at the library. I hope that you'll come in and see us. The lunar lab is still in process and we'll have a NASA exhibit in August celebrating that 50th anniversary of the moon landing and there'll be some programming along with that. So please come in and see us, take a look at what we're doing and recognize that we're really important to the community as an educational facility. Thank you.
Peg, can you tell the council about how lucky we are to have that lunar exhibit?
Well, our exhibit room coordinator is really a go-getter and Liz Kinnear actually was able to get something from NASA, so that's going to be coming with photographs and some artifacts from the moon landing. So, I think it's going to be a lot of fun. So hopefully you'll get in and have that reminiscing. I know I can remember in 1969 watching that black and white television as they landed on the moon. And we're actually having a lunar landing retro party with, so that we're going to be watching that as if we were watching it in 1969 with some really outdated hors d'oeuvres and some mocktails and that kind of stuff too. So check our website and you can find all of those things.
Thank you. Peg, any other questions for Peg? Alright, let's head over to Public Works. Justin?
Alright, thanks Mayor. My report can be seen on page 27 and 28 within the packet. Within the wastewater department, Sam Zabel has passed his probational period. He's been with us for six months. He's making strides in the right direction and our crew is finally at full strength again. We've been advertising for rehabbing one of our tanks within 8,000 billion, which is part of our digestion process of our, of our treatment plant. We'll be bringing forward hopefully a recommendation for the next council meeting. June, we completed a mercury program. The wastewater treatment plant sponsored a program where we accepted old mercury products, light bulbs, thermometers, things of that nature. Basically just to get it off the street and prevent it from getting into the environment. It's, it was a requirement through the DNR, but it's something that we're proud of doing and we're going to continue to do each year. Streetside, Evan Street is nearly complete. We wanted to have it open by now. The June weather was definitely a challenge. We had some washouts, the grass has not established like we wanted. So we kept it closed to monitor how the grass is growing. We're going to have a crew on site this week to clean up some of those washouts that were still out there. And we're hoping to have it open here pretty soon, but again, we want to make sure that the grass is growing before we open it up. These are people's front lawns. They care for it. They, they are really, well, if we don't have it just right when we open it, we're going to hear about it. So we want to make sure it's right before we do that. We ordered the snow blower, so knock on wood, it gets here before the first snow in October or November. We did some asphalt patching around the area. You probably saw some, some new patches out there. We installed new banners on Main Street. There's some red banners out on Main Street. We ordered them, got them out there. We got a few more coming. We're going to put along City Hall Square. I received proposals from design firms, for engineering design firms of Granite Street. Those are under review. I'm hoping to have that review complete and then bring a recommendation to council for the first meeting in August. So again, that's just the design part of Granite Street from Harrison all the way down to Main Street, that parking lot and possibly the alleyways on the west side of Main Street. We have an opening in our street department. We have advertised for that, applications have come in. Those are under review. We're planning to hopefully have that process complete within about a month and try to bring somebody on board on our street department. On the well, or water side, wells seven and eight, the rehabilitation project, seven and eight are done. The crew that did the work said that seven and eight were about the cleanest wells they've ever seen. So that always makes us feel good when, when we hear that sort of stuff. Well, five will be starting soon, so that'll be shut down and then we'll be off the hook for another nine to 10 years before we start the cycle of rehabbing our wells again. If you haven't noticed, the bandstand out front has been repainted from top to bottom. Russ, in help of a local painter, we got the whole thing done. Bauer Electric redid the lights, so we have new lights on it as well. So take a look at it, see how shiny and nice it is. We have a couple anniversaries this last month. Eric Henson, our water department, celebrated his 24th year in early July. And then Roger Hanson, of course, the street supervisor, celebrated his 32nd year on July 6th. That's it.
Alright, any questions or comments for Justin? Alright, thanks Justin. Andrew, Parks Director?
Thank you Mayor, council members. We'll start down in the senior center. They recently had their 50th anniversary party a couple weeks ago and it was well-attended. We had about 250 to 275 people there. We had some new members sign up. We had a lot of members having a lot of fun that day. There was dancing, there was food, there was all sorts of good stuff. So, if you're able to attend, that's great. But I really want to give a shout-out to Sarah and her staff. They put in a ton of time on that. Lot of extra hours to make that go really well. And she should be recognized for that because it did go very well for that, so. They have another fundraiser coming up, August 14th. We do have our music in the parks that the arts board puts on and they will be selling concessions there. So if you enjoy going down there and listening to those bands, stop in, grab a little snack and help out the senior center as well. They also received a new grant. It's through the Wisconsin, boy, now I'm going to say it wrong. Institute of Healthy Aging, I think is what it's called. They got a PALS grant and that means physical activity for lifelong success. So what that does is, it's a program to try to get people from the community who haven't exercised or just haven't exercised in a long time together and supporting each other and getting active again. So Sue and Sarah will be taking some training coming up here in August based on that grant to move forward with that. We'll be working with CISA 5 again. That's the organization that runs the alternative school at the old location of the school next door to us. So, down a little bit further than the health club. They used our gym space this past year. We created memorandum of understanding with them to do that and we're going to do that again this upcoming year. So it does bring in a little bit of revenue and gets our gym usage higher as well. We will be trying to start the food truck rally this week that we talked about last meeting. So if you're interested in checking that out, that'll start Thursday. Parkside of it, we are going to put in an ADA swing at Eco Park. We had a couple families out there that requested that and we're going to work with them and make sure that we have a swing that is adaptable to them. And that swing actually should come in tomorrow. I got a phone call today, it should come in tomorrow, so we should have it up there soon and help those families that are out there by the Eco Park. We also created some bocce ball courts. If you noticed, some painting in the center circle in the grass at Upper South Park. Those are bocce ball courts. I don't know much about it either, so don't ask me about bocce ball. But we got a request from, there's a bocce ball team for the Special Olympics and they were practicing in our parks and they requested that we could paint those courts for them and we did and they've been using them on Wednesday nights and it's gone very well. And they're very thankful for that. So we've been doing that with them. Baseball softball has wrapped up. Our second session of swimming, which is always a little bit higher attended due to warmer weather and warmer water. Soccer and our new three sport all started this past week and all of those are going well for us. That is it.
Alright, thank you Andrew. Questions?
My question is, excuse me.
Go ahead Dave.
The food truck is, did you change the times on that Andy?
I did, have to. Otherwise I wouldn't have gotten any food trucks. And I know it was something that was brought up at the last meeting. So, you know, one food truck could make it during the day, the other ones, most of them have other full-time jobs as well. So they just weren't able to make it. So, we struggled a little bit to find some food trucks and that was the one way of hopefully making it a little bit more successful. So, had to make that change.
The times are?
Forty-eight. Thank you Dave. Forty-eight.
I'm not opposed to it Andy, but do we have to change what we passed? Because we passed an earlier time. I don't know if we do or not, but...
Tom, what do you think?
I think the, I don't think so.
Alright.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thanks Steve.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions? Alright, Chief Ozell?
Thank you Mayor and council. My report can be found on page nine. The Wapaka, the police department is in the process of filling a patrol sergeant's position. Right now, we have four applicants that have submitted a resume and a letter of interest. They will have to take a written test and when they're done with the written test, there'll be an oral interview with an outside panel as well as a oral interview with me and then their, last year of their job performance. Those are going to be the things that they will be graded on. And we're hoping to have that done the first week in August. So when we have our commission meeting, the second Tuesday, that we can go ahead and we can select that person. And our goal is to have that person start Labor Day weekend. And they will be on call Labor Day weekend, so we're going to break them in right. So, but that will bring us up, both officers, Brian McCusky and Randy Bush should be done with their field training and that should bring us back up to full staff. So, that'll be good when we can get to that point. The other thing that we are looking at right now is the replacement of a 2014 and 2015 squads. We've had, obviously we've had those for a while and we're looking at getting two new SUVs next year. And we get the state bid from Ewald down towards the Milwaukee, Okana-Moark area. And those are looking right now, there is a just regular gas one that was roughly 32,000 and they had a turbo and a hybrid and those were well into the mid-30s. So we're looking at this time of just getting, replacing the two new cars. And I'm going to bring some final numbers to the commission next week as to what the cost is that it's going to cost us to get those cars, so we can get them ordered. We've always ordered them early so we can get them out on the roads earlier in the wintertime. So that's our goal with that. For some of you, obviously, Evans Street has been closed, but we did put our speedboard sign up on Evans Street, and it's still there, but I have data from June 26th through July 2nd. During that timeframe, just going one direction from Churchill Street towards Berlins Street or County Highway E, we had 394 vehicles travel that road. Of those 394, we had some really good results. We only had one vehicle that won over 35 miles per hour. It was one vehicle between 36 and 40 miles per hour, and most of the other vehicles ranged from 21 to 30 miles per hour. So, we're gonna continue to have that speedboard. I've been working with Justin in regards to that. Once the barricades are lifted, you'll see a directed enforcement from us that will be running radar there as well as the speedboard. That road is really nice, and we want to try to keep the speeds down in that area. And then lastly, we're gonna be having our brat fry at Fleet Farm on August 10th from 10 to 2 o'clock. And last year, we also had a brat fry there, and a lot of people ask us what we do with those proceeds. During this year, we actually purchased, with the fundraising money, two less-lethal shotguns as well as their ammunition. And that's just another tool that we have for us when dealing with people. Unfortunately, there's times in the wintertime that our tasers don't work. We can't use our pepper spray. Our tasers don't work because everybody has heavy clothing on. The pepper spray may not work because of the wind direction. So, this is just another tool that we can use to assist us in the field. And then also with that money, we always go ahead to the breadbasket, and we serve two different meals during the year. So, that's what that money from the brat, from the brat fry is, is helping with. So, other than that, everything's informational.
All right. Thank you, chief. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, on those existing police vehicles that you wanted to replace, you know, how many miles are on each of those?
They're over 100,000 miles. Those are miles, and you've probably got 100,000 hours on them. Our maintenance that we have is really, really high on vehicles. We've had vehicles sometimes five and six years, and we've had to replace transmissions. We, we just have a lot of problems with them, and then with the resale value of them, we're getting a, we'll be getting a higher resale value of those vehicles.
Do they come pre-marked, prelogoed and everything?
No, that's something that we have to, that we have to send out for. So, they'll, they'll come, we just order them, there'd be a, a black squad car, and then those get sent out for the decals and all the interior stuff, the computers, the radar. They put the radar stuff into the dash, the lights, and everything else.
And just lastly, has there been any consideration to designing the look of the police cars so that they're more attention-getting, more safety-focused as opposed to the aggressive sort of black styling?
We just, we just did a redesign with them with, they used to be black and white. Now, they're all black with our, with our logos that are on there.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, let's go to Josh's world here. IT.
This past two weeks, we've completed having our new phone system installed. We're operational on there, no major issues. Just small little tweaks and small little things that come with a project like that. One of the nice things in this room, we were able to tie in the new phone to the speakers and the mic, so if we ever have to do a call in here, it's integrated to the system we're using. We are making our switch with Spectrum from the PRI to SIP phone service the second week in August. That's gonna save us money, and that's just newer technology to get our phone lines in here. We've been working with AT&amp;T on more and more billing issues that we continue to have with them, and they're worse than dealing with government. It took seven weeks just to talk to the right person there. With the phone project, we were able to free up a server that I'm gonna put at the PD, basically to put redundancy on our servers, or all of our virtual servers will also be over there if we ever need to fail over to that. This Friday, proposals are due for multi-function printers. We've got five machines, two that we own that are over seven years old, and then the other three are lease or rental agreements end between November this year and February next year, so working through that process. And hopefully, we'll have a recommendation for city council in September on that. Wapak Online, we continue to work on a grant project this year. We've been hitting a lot of dead ends, talking to property owners to locate equipment or possibly erect towers. This past week or two, we've been starting to hit some good luck. We have put up one and very likely shortly, a second pop in the town of Deer Creek, which is just in Outagamy County where the Village of Bear Creek is, so it's right near our project area. We've met with the town chair up at Mattson about some possible opportunities up there as well. And for anything with our grant project, we've got until September 30th for reimbursement. And it's not that we can't continue expanding or doing upgrades after that date. That would just be at our full expense. So, that project's moving along.
All right. Any questions for Josh, comments? All right, and Sandy, city clerk.
Thanks, Mayor. Mine will be short and sweet, unlike a couple others, but.
Oh, Jack, right away.
I first want to thank Mayor Smith for appointing me to the position of city clerk. And I hope you had a chance to look in your packet because I did provide a listing of all of the licenses that the city clerk's office issues, because there's many that we do that you guys don't see. They, they don't need council approval, and that's it.
All right. Any questions, comments for Sandy? All right, well, let's move on then right away to unfinished business, which is actually getting council confirmation for my appointment of Sandy to the city clerk's position. And at the same time, you would be approving the job description that Kathy has put together. Just a little history as we remember, our, our city administrator held the city administrator's position slash city clerk's position. We are now breaking that off, and the city clerk will be a separate position as it was many years ago, 15 years ago or so. So, we're, we're putting it back in as a city clerk's position. You can see the, if you look on, starting on page 91, you can see the job description for that. Kathy, anything you want to add?
No, it, these are essentially the statutory duties of the clerk that are in the job description and any other things that Sandy is responsible for, the council.
Okay, and I guess there's a third thing in here, too. We are, or I am recommending that Sandy then receive a salary of $57,100. And Sandy, you were hourly before, was it?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And she's going to, from hourly to salary, it is a, it is a raise in pay from what she was making as the assistant clerk. So, we're looking at all three of those items, and we can do those all in one motion if you're okay with that. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve of all those with the exception of her salary. I would like to see her salary go to $60,000. And the reasoning that I'm saying that is that she's been doing these jobs for 15 years and hasn't been really compensated for what she's been doing. And I would like to see her get a raise to $60,000.
Okay, so you heard Steve's motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Hackett and a second by Fair that the council approves of Sandy Stibbs as our new city clerk and approves her job description and also approves her salary of $60,000 per year. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Do we need to do the, this right now? Okay. We might as well. We're on camera here, so. Okay, this is actually the oath, and I'm gonna stand next to her so she can read off of what I read first, but. I, Sandy Stibbs.
I, Sandy Stibbs.
Having been appointed to the position of city clerk for the city of Wapaka.
Having been appointed to the position of city clerk for the city of Wapaka.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability under the penalties of perjury.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability under the penalties of perjury.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on then. We have a resolution number 1433. Justin, this is you.
Yeah, this is the second reading of this resolution for our sidewalk project or sidewalk assessment for our sidewalk replacement program. That's shown on page 94 and 95 of the packet. Again, this is whenever sidewalk is replaced on a property adjacent or adjacent to a property that is split 50/50 between the city and the adjacent property owner. The list of property owners in those parcels are shown on page 95 of the packet. Notification was sent. That process is all, the proper notification process has all been taken place. So, tonight would be the approval of the resolution, and then our crew, city, street crew will actually be doing the work. We will not be hiring this work out, but we will be completing the work at $5 a square foot for 5-inch concrete and $7 a square foot for 7-inch concrete, which is usually in driveways. So, an estimate was created, and those people were made aware of the, the potential costs that will be assessed at their property. The actual work that will be done will be measured, and assessment will be based on the actual field measurements. That's about it.
All right, so the resolution is basically allowing us to assess the property owners for the fixing of their sidewalks. So, we'd need a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Peterson, that we approve resolution 1433. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is this, this list is considerably less than years in the past. Is it because our sidewalks are getting better, or is it budgetary consideration?
A large portion of the sidewalks we're replacing are on city property within parking lots, alleyways, things of that nature, so we're just taking on those replacements and consuming that 100% cost. So, based, this is around our sidewalk replacement program. We budget $15,000 to $20,000 each year to replace sidewalks for the entire city. And usually, it's done in a neighborhood or down a couple of streets in the assessments. You know, all the 100% of that sidewalk is assessed, or not 100% sidewalk. 100% of the work is done where it can be assessed. Here, we just have a lot of it occurring, like I said, along parking lots that we own or alleyways that we own.
Okay, so that's why there's less individual.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Justin. Next up, we have new business. We have entering into a contract with IPR, Integrated Public Resources for assistance with city administration. Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. My item is on page 96 in the packet, and with the retirement of the city administrator, I am asking for assistance in the duties of the position. Based on information that I've gotten from other municipalities, I've reached out to Integrated Public Resources, who has filled in this type of position in Winnicott, Wayawiga, has recruited for the New London City Administrator. I also know Russ Van Gompo. He is my former boss from the Village of Brown Deer. But he, he, yeah, his company has other retired administrators, village managers, assist communities in this, in this position to help get us over that vacancy and help alleviate some of the stress and that filling that position is causing staff to like have sleepless nights. But I have Russ here tonight, so he can go over some of the items that he is planning on assisting with us and some of his experience. And would be more than happy to answer some questions. He also has met with the department heads that were available when we brought him in and answered a lot of their questions. They also, IPR does do recruitment, and we may be using him to help us in the recruitment process for this position. I'm looking at having him two days a week for five to six hours. So, I think it's a minimal amount of money to help with the administration of the city.
Thank you, and good evening. Kathy pretty much covered the background. Our company, Integrated Public Resources, is actually a division of McMahon Engineering out of Nina. And our company was created to do public-private partnerships where we help communities do public projects with some private funding, but in addition, we do administrative services. We come in and, and do interim administrative services. We will also help out communities in some other interim assignments. We also do executive recruitment. Most recently, I was the interim administrator in the city of Winnicott. I've helped out, I mean, the Village of Winnicott. I've helped out at the Village of Hortonville. I did some interim work for the Village of Hortonville. And during my time as interim, I also put together a recruitment profile and process that the, the village board for the Village of Hortonville ended up adopting and going with. In addition, we've done the recruitment for the city of New London, and I've had the opportunity to be the interim administrator in Bellevue and Mondovy, which is on the western part of the state. So, my resume is actually in your packet, so if you have questions about my background, very briefly, 35 years of local government experience. I started out on the finance side of things. I actually worked for a time in the state of Minnesota, was always still a Packer fan, and moved back to my hometown of Little shoot, Wisconsin, and was the finance director there for two years, three years, and then became the administrator. From Little shoot, I moved down to the Village of Brown Deer. I was the village manager there for a number of years, almost 15 years. And then finally, I concluded my public service as a city manager in the city of Eau Claire and retired there and started working with the private sector. So, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, council members, if you have questions, but certainly be available to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Russ, do, do we have the days that you're going to be here? Do we?
I was thinking of Tuesdays and Thursdays, the days that you're in the office.
Okay. That would be great. And then I think Andrew, Andrew number two is here.
Mondays and Tuesdays.
So, he'd be here that same, one of those days, too, to, so that would be great.
And, and part of my background's also economic development. I've, I've done tax increment financing deals for the city of Eau Claire, the Village of Brown Deer, the Village of Little Shoot, helped try to bring businesses to those communities as well. So, pretty versed in, in economic development as well.
All right, other questions? Well, thank you, Russ. I appreciate that you are willing to do this. Obviously, you're going to get paid for it. But I mean, we appreciate that your willingness to step in. I know substituting is not always the best way to work with people. But I, I'm pretty confident in talking to the other staff members that they feel pretty comfortable to work with you. So, thanks. And we're starting right away next week?
I'm planning on having him in Thursday morning.
Okay, awesome. All right, so we would need an approval of this contract that Sandy, or Sandy, Kathy is proposing.
I'd just like to interject and ask a question.
Go ahead.
Not of Russ necessarily, but yes, of Kathy. So this agenda item is to approve hiring of Russ for this period of time. But the proposal that's in our minutes also talks about professional recruitment. Are we voting on that tonight or are we just voting on?
No, right now, I'm only asking him to come in and just do the interim work.
Okay, good.
As the recruiter.
Because I'd just like to throw it out there that I think hiring our administrator is a pretty big decision. And I would like to see that put out for, you know, get a couple of proposals from a couple of different companies before we rush into selecting one company to help us find that administrator.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just respond to that or just add a couple additional points. And I certainly appreciate your thoughts and comments on that. Basically, our proposal and our compensation would be the same. So that my number of hours that, working on our recruitment proposal would be the same hourly rate that we do for interim services. But I certainly understand that. But we would definitely be interested in doing it. And we've actually, when we did the Village of Hortonville, found that there were some economies. If I'm in the office and have some downtime, I can be working on the recruitment process as well and working with council, working with staff members. But be that as it may, I think what we're looking at now is just to get some help in taking care of the day-to-day business.
And just to be clear, when it comes time to decide on who to hire to do this kind of work, is that something that's going to appear before the council and we'll make a decision on that? Or is this?
We can bring that back to council.
Yeah, I mean, I would like us to also take a look at Public Administration Associates out of Oshkosh. They've worked with over a hundred and sixty communities, municipalities in the state of Wisconsin. That's their main line of focus. They're not doing a million things and this just happens to be a slice.
HR Gov is another one. So there's several of them out there.
Get some other, make sure we're getting the best.
Well, again, I just want to remind everybody that city administrator's position as well as department heads is the appointment of the mayor. And so the mayor drives this discussion on who we hire for a city administrator and how we do that. So it really comes down to me with your, with your approval of whatever I decide to do in the future. Okay? All right, any other questions or comments? All right, you ready to vote? Oh, then we need a motion. Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by, I'm sorry, Kealan, that we approve entering into a contract with IPR, which is Integrated Public Resources for the assistance with city administration. And the fee was a hundred and ten dollars per hour with approximately five to six hours a day, two days a week. All right, any other discussion? Sandy, we'll call the roll.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett. Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, Russ, thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight. Look forward to working with you. Next up, we have a special use permit for PI Tower Development LLC. This is for a ground lease agreement secured for NAIM LLC. The owner and Peter Shaw from Tom eighty Realty Services Incorporated is acting as the agent. And this is nine oh two Churchill Street. Kathy, your name's on this one, even though it went through city planning.
I'm going to defer this to Justin.
Awesome. This actually went through City Planning Commission. And Peter is here tonight too. So if we have questions of him, he's sitting in the back of the room, we can certainly ask that. Just kind of explain, Justin, too, where the tower is. It's nine oh two Churchill Street, but.
That's known as the Rose Garden Cafe Restaurant corner or near Churchill Street there. The property, let's see, the, I should back up, excuse me. The memo is shown on page one twelve and the application is thereafter for multiple pages. I'm scrolling through to see if there's an aerial for you to reference.
There it is, yeah.
Yes, one forty-one. I thought there was a better one than that. Well, regardless, the Rose Garden Cafe, the property there is L-shaped. It tucks behind the current bus garage there. The land lease is approximately seventy foot by seventy foot. So it'd be tucked away in that corner there. And there got approval from Plan Commission for the special use to put up a hundred and twenty-five foot monopole, which is basically just a big round pole up in the air to house cellular equipment. And specific Verizon would utilize it at first. In the future, there's room to expand to additional cell providers. So basically, that's, it's just a land lease agreement to put this up here. Reviewing the state statutes, this falls within all the legal requirements of state statutes and within our code, our municipal code. So everything has, I guess, checked the boxes. There's a number of questions and answers that went on during the Plan Commission as far as what happens if it would potentially fall, the fencing. Falling was a concern. It is designed or engineered that if it were to break, it would break at like a midpoint or a half section and just kind of fold onto itself and thus would not fall outside of that seventy-foot footprint. Fencing will be there installed. That meets the code within, I guess, our fencing code of, within the city. There is no potential or believe potential of interference with other radio signals. There is a letter in here from, it's escaping me right now, excuse me. Where did that go? Well, there's also a letter here, a review from the Federal Aviation Administration as far as a flight zone or a path or a conflict with that, showing that it checks all the boxes for the FAA. So basically, yeah, after a pretty extensive review, it was determined that this fits within state statutes and city codes and was basically voted to allow to come to council. So it has to come here now for final approval.
Just a little bit of history too. There was a few years ago at the state level, the state has given communities less ability to govern these towers. So we very, there's very little that we can do, even if we didn't like it necessarily. I hate to say it that way, but that's really what's happening here is we're following the state rules. We changed our, we changed our ordinances to match the state. We couldn't be more strict than what the state is. And so they're well within what the state guidelines are here. Although at City Planning Commission, I think Alan, you'll agree, Peter was more than willing to discuss everything that's going on with this tower and so forth. So if you're interested in asking him some questions, I think he'd be willing to answer those. Or Peter, if you have any comments you'd like to make? Just give your name, please, too.
Well, thank you very much for summarizing the app. And yes, again, I'm Peter Shaw, I'm agent for both the applicants. The tower owner is PI Tower Development LLC. And then Verizon Wireless would be their first tenant and the provider, service provider from the facility. So I can answer any questions if you've had a chance to read the app. We did have a decent discussion with it. The Planning Commission received unanimous recommendation for approval and are respectfully asking for the same.
I guess I would like to ask, why, why that location right off of a main corridor coming into town?
Sure, so I mean.
It appears to me like it would be a bit of an eyesight, chain link fencing in a tall tower in an area of town that we need to beautify.
Okay, well, that's a fair question. So essentially, locations of cell towers are based off of a network engineering need. So currently, right now, Opaaca's got, the two closest towers are kind of to the northwest and I think we're ten and fifty-four hit. So essentially, as user demand grows, we all use iPhones and iPads. The network gets stressed and you need to add sites relative to where other sites are and where the user patterns are. So it really starts with a searching developed by RF Engineering Group, identifying at what location, at what height, they need a site to satisfy their need. So when we did get this, you know, you are talking about a commercial corridor and these uses historically are considered very compatible. And as you mentioned, when we found this property, we thought it lent itself to it very well. There was a spot L-shaped in the back of the property to help obscure it. Push it back there. There's some mature tree vine behind it to the west. And then you do have the bus barn kind of to the north of it. So all things considered, I think it's a good site for any sort of mitigating any sort of impacts like mentioned.
Okay, did somebody else have a question over here, I thought?
I did, but Dimitri kind of asked what happens.
Okay.
Just was kind of wondering what, what the purpose of it, why it goes to improve service or?
It is, and it's really the challenge. Verizon Wireless and companies like them, they're chasing the demand. I mean, every year, the technology evolves, the user demand. You know, wireless communications are just, you know, they can't keep up. So that's really what you're seeing nowadays on these sites.
So if you look at the site from Churchill Street and you can envision where the Rose Garden is, they have a parking lot to the left of that. This is going to be in the far back right corner, right behind the school districts, building one of their big garages that they have there. So it's going to be tucked back in there. To the left, there is a residential area, but there is a, is it six foot? There's a, I think it's either a five or six foot fence between the parking lot and the residential. So I don't know who put it up, if the residential person put it up or if the owners of Rose Garden put it up. But there is some separation there and then also on the backside. And of course, the chain link fence, we asked, the city asked that the barbed part of the wire be put even higher so that we don't have to worry about anybody getting injured from just walking by there, even if they were going to. So I think we did it about as much as we can to make this work at this site, as much as we're allowed to do, quite honestly. Okay? Any other questions? All right, we'd be looking for a motion then.
I move to approve the special use permit for PI Tower Development LLC.
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve of the special use permit at nine oh two Churchill Street. Any discussion? Sandy, we'll call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
No.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
I don't use any of these things because I wouldn't listen to them.
Yes.
Seven ayes, one no, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Peter, for showing up and explaining. Next, we have a substantial alteration, alternate, alteration to special use permit determination and special use permit annual review for the Foundations for Living. This is that property on Churchill Street that, you know, will allow homeless people to stay overnight there. When they say substantial, you really need to dig down in there. If you don't mind, Kathy, I'll just keep moving with this because this was at City Planning. This was just a request from Foundations for Living so that they can add bathroom facilities and also an area for washer and dryers too, so that they can, they do not have bathroom facilities at this time. So, and they do allow people to stay overnight. So City Planning Commission did recommend to council that we approve this special use permit with those changes. The other thing is, is that they're required to come back on an annual basis to have their special use permit. They asked for three years review on it and we compromised on two years at the city planning level. So both of those items are the request of the Foundations for Living. I don't know if you have any other questions that you can ask either Alan, Justin, Kathy or myself. We were all at that meeting. Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
I have.
Yes.
Is the building owned by Foundations or is it owned by somebody else?
Right, well, I think it, I don't know, but I'm pretty sure it's on a land contract. So I think it is owned by Foundations for Living and they're paying the former owners. It was amusement, what was it, Gooder Johns or, yeah, yeah.
The City Plan Commission also decided that this was not a substantial alteration, which is, you know, there's a special requirement there. And so it's just a continued special use permit, not substantial alteration.
So I guess we're just, if you approve tonight, you're just approving that they're allowed to alter their facility to put showers in there and facilities for washer and dryer in there. And then also change from an annual review to a biannual review. Thank you, Alan, for that.
Mayor?
Yeah.
With, with doing this, okay, do they still have to go through all the other permit stuff? Through like building permits and the?
Yeah, absolutely.
Building permits and?
And review.
And review, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. All of this would be contingent upon them getting approval from?
Okay.
From our building inspector.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Kealan, that we approve of the alteration to the Foundations for Living facility and also change their review process for the special use from annual to biannual review. And that does occur in October of that year. Any further discussion? Sandy, we'll call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Alan Kealan.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, and this is just discussion only. This is discussing the allowing of ATVs and UTVs on city streets. And we had some lengthy discussion today with the staff. And I think we all came to the conclusion that we're probably not really ready to make a recommendation tonight. And I talked to Lori tonight too, and she has the name of the individual that's county.
He's a county deputy, but he's president of the ATV.
Yeah, so if we have some interest from a council level, we would ask him to come to either our next meeting or one of our next meetings. to either our next meeting or one of our next meetings that he could attend and discuss this for the future. The impetus for this is actually, this was requested probably about 18 months ago, and it never really made it even out of the mayor's office with discussion at that time. But it's come back to light because the townships, the surrounding townships, no, three of the four surrounding townships have already approved allowing ATVs on their roads. One of the townships, I understand, is discussing it, and I don't know whether they'll approve it or not, but I think it's pretty favorable. So all four of the townships are around us, will have ATV trails. The discussion was whether the city is interested in allowing ATVs and UTVs to pass through our city. And there are a couple options that we could talk about. They would be just a, and I'm just starting the discussion, and we can go as far as we want with this tonight. And then I would say that we would table it until we can get this individual here to discuss it a little bit more. But we could talk about just a designated road that they would travel through the city to get from one side to the other. We could talk about many roads that they're allowed to. There are roads that they're not allowed to travel on, and Chief Ozell could speak to that. We could also look at what we have. We do have an ordinance for snowmobiles. The ordinance for the snowmobiles is really pretty basic. It says that if the property owner allows you to drive on their property, then you're allowed to drive in the city. Well, we only have a few examples of those within the city, and that would be without naming names. But we're, the truck stop, obviously, you've seen snowmobiles out there, JR's across the street, Courtside is within the city, Club 22 is within the city, Fleet Farm, obviously, is within the city to get fuel.
Industrial Park.
Yeah, and the industrial park also, we allow them to go through there, and that was done by city approval. So basically, our ordinance for snowmobiles says, as long as the property owner approves it, and we're a property owner, obviously, the city is, then the city is okay with that. We obviously don't want snowmobilers to drive across, we don't want to mandate that a snowmobiler can drive across your property. You know, we want it to be your decision to do that as a property owner, obviously. Paul?
I had some fairly lengthy discussions about this with my neighbor, who's in support of this. And it seemed, you know, one of the things that is, on the positive side, is that, is if the townships are embracing this and we at least have some corridor areas where we would allow this, it would, down the road, possibly increase tourism to this area quite a bit. So I think it's something that we shouldn't necessarily dismiss out of hand. I think we should discuss it and perhaps invite the gentleman to talk to us about it and down the road, maybe allow some corridors where UTVs, ATVs could get through the city.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
I'd like to know what the chief's opinion of it is.
Well, I own a, I actually own a ATV, and I've driven UTVs. I see some pros and I see some cons. We have to remember about the safety as to which roads you would designate those to be at. ATVs are going to be a little more dangerous because they don't have seat belts. UTVs do have seat belts. Anybody that's at the age of 16, age of 18, would have to wear a helmet. So we do ride, when I go up north, we do ride our four-wheelers and UTVs up on the roads up there, and we do it in a safe manner. We would just have to designate areas in the city if that's something that the city council would pursue as to where it would be safe for them to operate. So.
You know, I think one of the big things they were looking at was where could they get gas coming, all this coming together is where can they get gas in the city? And, you know, so that's a start, that's what I was hearing a lot of, was a place to maybe come and maybe even to have a restaurant close where they could go. So, and I have one question for Brian. Brian, okay, if they're 16 or under or 18, do they have to take the ATV class to, you know, and it's nice to wear a helmet, but do they have to take the class to learn how to be a good citizen to that ATV?
I honestly don't know that answer. I would assume they would, just like they would with a boarder safety or they would have to take a motorcycle.
Okay.
My kids aren't that age yet, so I don't have to worry about that yet.
Well, I do know that if they ride on public properties, they do have to have the.
The training?
Training.
Yeah.
And they do have to have a valid driver's license.
Okay.
So you just can't operate it without a valid driver's license.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Scott?
I think with the, if you look at the ads on TVs, there's quite a proliferation of these UTVs and maybe not so much ATVs, but, and looking at some of the information we had here of other cities, I, you know, they've started to allow it in quite big cities. So I think it's something we really should consider seriously, albeit maybe designated roads, because I think it's just an up-and-coming new form of recreation.
Okay, so if you're okay, we'll bring something back.
I'll get you the.
Yeah, as soon as we can get this person to come and speak to us on that, and then we can discuss from there where we want to go. We'll probably have it as some kind of action item at a meeting in the near future. I don't know if it will be our first meeting in August, but it will be within the next month and a half, I would say. Okay? All right, next, we have License Report 1454. This is a taxi driver's license. This is for, you can see that it's on page 232, so we'd just be looking for motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve License Report 1454. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. License Report 1455, which is the operator's license for this month, page 233. Again, we're looking for a motion to approve.
So.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Hackett, that we approve of.
I have one correction.
Yeah, you can.
The fourth name down says Brenda Burl. It should be Rebecca Burl.
Okay.
It's a typo on the report.
All right, who made the motion again?
Peterson and.
You're okay with that change?
Absolutely.
I don't like it, but.
Okay. Mr. Comedian. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Next up, we're going into closed session here. This is a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hagan, that we go into closed session. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.[1777.11]